It's a little past ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular commissioners' court meeting for Starr County, Monday, June 12th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. I'd like to welcome and thank you all for being here this morning. If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. First item is minutes. I believe you all have them there before you. Moved and second to approve minutes. Discussion. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is claims. Move and second to approve claims. Discussion. Oliver, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Before we go with our reports, I believe there are several people that have presentations. So if it's all right, we'll go ahead and take them first. First is the air evac life team. Ms. Rodriguez, if you please use the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. We're going to pass out some information about what we're going to talk about.
Good morning. My name is Diana Rodriguez and I am here with Fidel Garcia and we are with Air Medical Network and Air Evac Life Team. We are the air ambulance company that services this area. And the reason we are here today is because we have been seeing a great need and a great demand. I have Mr. Garcia that is currently employed by one of the ground ambulance companies here as well. Plus, he's employed part-time with our company. And I wanted him to share a little bit about the need that he has seen and that way it'll give you an idea of what, you know, has been happening in this area.
Morning, Fidel Garcia. I know by, I've been working with Starr County here for about, about ten years. The Air Medical Transportation Group that we've been working with, Air Evac, they've been around for about six or seven years and knowing how long we've been working outside them, the demand has increased. I know here this hospital has a certain level of care that requires transfers to higher level of care with specialty doctors in the Valley, McAllen, DHR, and regional. I can tell you at least a good number from sixty to eighty percent of people, of patients, end up requiring to go over there or even just asking to go straight over there in the situation that they need a special doctor that is not going to see them here in this area. So a lot of the time, especially for strokes, heart attacks, major traumas, surgeries, they need to go straight over there. The Air Medical Network or the Air Evac groups are real good about getting them over there and get straight to the, almost straight to the surgery bed without even having to delay any transport of a receiving doctor, receiving facility, or, or other middle people. So I'm just here to recommend that you guys consider it for the reason that the demand is there, people have been asking for it. And we've been using this service a lot more often these days than before. I know we activate Air Evac at least two to three times a week. Sometimes, I remember within a twenty-four hour period where we've transported three times occasionally.
Where are you located?
We're based in McAllen. Yes.
The base is from McAllen.
So if the patient is in front of the car, it's going to take you a little time to get away?
It averages about fifteen to twenty minutes depending on the winds and depending on the transport, but the hospital EMS here is real good about activating early while they're going to the call. So in that situation, it saves them, a lot of times they can get there in ten minutes, almost, sometimes they even beat the ambulance there sometimes, depending on where it's at and the area.
Let me ask you something. And I saw this here last week, that the ambulance got to there where, to, in some way, this, this was where they landed.
Most of the time.
And I saw the ambulance there, so I'm pretty sure they were ready to transport, transport a patient and I went there to co-op. As soon, he was getting there and we were parallel, so I went there and it took me, it took more than ten, ten minutes to get out here because I did a bunch of stuff there to co-op and the, and the chopper never landed and they were still standing there.
But sometimes they're cleaning up afterwards.
No, no, no. These, they were, he was, he had his lights on coming in. We were parallel, I took off from my, my place up there and we were parallel to each other. He, we had his lights, emergency lights on and stopped there at the, at the parking area there at the subway. And then I went to the co-op and did a bunch of stuff there for at least fifteen, twenty minutes and I, I came back, I was hoping to see the chopper land, I never saw it, you know? And I took off and I don't know whatever happened or how long it took to come and pick up that patient because I didn't pay attention to it.
Usually, they, they won't stay for that long. The ambulance will stay for maybe ten, fifteen minutes max to meet up with a helicopter and if not, if they're not going to meet up with, they'll take off and they'll leave. What happens a lot of times, the helicopter will come, they're not supposed to be there for more than ten minutes. They'll be there for ten minutes, they get report, they get the patient, they move him over to the helicopter, they take off. They take off and then they try to get the rest to report on the way. The ambulance usually will stay behind to clean up their stretchers, clean up the mess depending on the emergency.
Like I told you, we were parallel when he gets lights on going towards that area. He drove into the subway area there and to the, to the east side and was parked up there and I said, well, they're going to come and pick up the patient. But like I said, we just stopped there and co-op and everything and left and I never saw the chopper land on that, so I don't know whatever happened.
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I can try to find out how long ago it was, but like I tell you, the criteria for the Air Evac, it only allows them to be there for a certain amount of minutes. They don't want them to delay it unless it's, you're trying to stabilize and it's going to take a long process. Other than that, the whole idea is to get in urgent transport from one place to another. So they try to reduce that much.
How many?
I understand it's a good service, no doubt in my mind, but I'm saying, but what I'm telling you, it takes about ten minutes. Well, this took a little longer and probably they were tied up somewhere else.
How many choppers do you have in your fleet?
And, and in McAllen, there's one chopper. Whenever that one cannot service, the one from Laredo is also available. That one takes a little bit longer, but unless it's in Roma area, but it's going to, it's going to be a little quicker, you know? But depending what area of the county we are over here, the sister unit is in Laredo and then there's another one in Carrizo which may be about ten minutes after that one. But with South Texas, this, this service covers all the, a lot of areas in Texas. They have, and what other areas are there?
Okay, we have backup, we have backup bases in Laredo, Carrizo Springs, Eagle Pass, Pierce Saw, and those are backup bases. We have had situations where we've had three of our choppers in the sunny Cidro area report to one scene of an accident because there were three patients that needed to be transported from there.
This friend of mine had an accident in Mars of Roma at a ranch. The truck ran over him and they called the chopper, but the chopper never got there.
Yeah, I remember.
But they did, I guess the DPS trooper took him in his car.
No, I, I remember that incident, it was a few weeks ago. The ambulance was on their way over there. They had a lot of trouble finding the area because the guy was by himself and he didn't know where he was at, he couldn't declare what ranch he was at. The DPS trooper led the ambulance over there. The ambulance tried to meet up with the helicopter, by that time, the pilot had already been too much time in the air and he had to, he had to go back because they were in the air for forty minutes trying to find that location. After that, the pilot timed out.
He didn't know where he was.
Yeah.
You think he could reach the phone? And the phone never works there, it worked that time.
Yeah, it was a miscommunication. He didn't know where he was at.
So that saved his lives, you know, he would have been gone.
Yeah, he was in a very bad situation that man, but he would have been a perfect candidate to be transported if the helicopter was, was in that, that's just a rare, a rare situation.
And, and that's why we're here. We're trying to bring awareness not only to the county employees, but to people in general, all the residents of Starr County, because it is, it is a costly service, but it is, it is a life-saving service. And so we're trying to bring awareness to that along with the fact that, you know, we do have a very affordable membership that could be either five or six dollars a month and in, in a case like this with the county employees, it could be deducted, you know, through their payroll.
The five or six dollars, would that include only the member or the, the whole household?
It would include the whole household, correct.
Because we currently have a company that works with us. I don't know if it's the same one or not.
What is that company?
Is this the one?
It's theirs.
Is this the one?
Yes, that is ours. And that card that you current, that you have right there is another upgrade. It's an upgrade, it's called the Fly You Home Membership. So for people that travel a hundred and fifty miles or more from their residence, whether it be San Antonio or another state, if they are either hospitalized because of a serious illness, an accident, heart attack, stroke, anything like that, and let's say they're in another state and they're hospitalized, once they're stabled, we will send a fixed winged plane that is set up like an ICU unit along with the medical staff necessary to transport them back safely to their, to their home state or a hospital that's in the vicinity that has the level of care.
We, we have you down as a presentation, so really, we cannot take any action. But I believe what was done last year during the enrollment period for our health insurance.
Yes.
Your company was there and then whoever wanted it would get it, get it, those that didn't, it was not mandatory, it's just whoever wants it and needs it would get it.
Correct.
I guess we could put it back on the agenda for an action item and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Sounds great. All right, well, thank you so much for your attention.
I got my card, my son bought it.
They don't have it active yet.
It's inactive. Okay, well, let us, we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay.
And we can take action and maybe we can invite you all to come and, and offer your services.
Perfect, all right.
We, we don't want to burden our employees, but those that want it can get it and those that don't.
Correct, yes, and that's how it's usually offered as a voluntary benefit.
How about the general population? How do they get that card?
Well, we're trying to find a way to reach everybody, especially ranch owners due to snake bites, gunshot wounds, things like that, because we've had to be on call for those. So, I mean, if you have community events, I know there's one coming up on the twenty-fourth, so we try to participate and bring the helicopter out to as many events that you have out here so that we could provide that information to them.
I think if you get with the commissioners and maybe they can set up something in their precincts where they can bring in, invite the, the community or the precinct and those that would like it, certainly we'll, we'll offer it.
That would be wonderful. We'd like to do that. Thank you so much.
But you need to get with the commissioners.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Item nine is a proclamation proclaiming June as the health summer meals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Elaine Hernandez. I'm with the Texas Hunger Initiative and summertime is upon us and this is a time when many schoolchildren are out playing, but it's also a time of vulnerability when children may go hungry. But not here in Starr County because we have two amazing school districts and nutrition directors who are ensuring that no child will go hungry in our county. I'd like to introduce Ms. Patsy Ramirez from Rio Grande City CISD and Mr. J.J. Trevino from Roma ISD to quickly present your summer meal program.
Good morning, Judge Vera, commissioners, guests. As a community, we are better when all kids excel and in order to do that, we have to ensure that their nutritional needs are met. And in our area, of course, we have several children that live at or below the poverty level and that they don't have access to healthy meals, especially throughout the summer months because school is out. And as we all know, hunger doesn't take a vacation. So we appreciate all the efforts that Elaine has given us from the Baylor College of Medicine. I want to thank my public information department. I want to thank my staff and Cindy Fuentes, of course, for all her help in getting us, you know, in touch with some of you all to help get some of our sites up and running. So I want to thank you all very much for that. Thank you. We have over twenty-five feeding sites this summer and we initiated the mobile feeding sites this school year, or actually this summer, and they have turned out, you know, to be very successful. We have fed over a thousand kids our first week with the mobile feeding sites alone. So we're looking forward to that number increasing and we appreciate all of your help in getting these efforts promoted in our community. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, we have twelve feeding sites. This is our third year doing it together there in Roma. We started off with five, which, five buses, which each bus has three different sites. We narrowed it down to, to four buses doing twelve sites. It's been a success and we do it from the first Monday after school finishes to the Friday before school starts. So we do it the whole summer. So we thank you and we welcome you to stop by any of the sites whenever you, you'd feel like it. We wanted to do a bash to invite you guys as well from the different precincts, so we'd appreciate if you'd just show up with us and take some pictures with the community. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and commissioners. On behalf of Congressman Henry Cuad, I'm here to give the special recognition to Rio Grande City ISD. We've already provided a certificate of recognition to Roma ISD and we will be working on promoting these services through our website. We want to make sure that the entire community knows that, you know, Starr County is doing the best that they can. The ISDs are doing the best that they can to help provide nutritional meals to our students. So at this time, I want to provide this certificate of congressional recognition to you guys for your humanitarian efforts. Thank you very much. Yes, Elaine. Thank you to Elaine as well. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Before you all leave, I do want to thank Elaine and of course, the school districts for all the effort and, and of course, our Congressman Henry Cuad. And special thanks to Cuad because he's the one footing the bill. So we, we thank you all and last week, Commissioner Alvarez and myself were out there and we certainly understand the importance of this program and we thank you all for, for what you do. A lot of our kids, as was mentioned, probably this is the only meal that they get, so it's certainly important to us and anything we can do as, as a county, we're certainly there to help you. Thank you all, congratulations. Yeah, I guess if you all stand up in front, we'll stand back here. Maybe we can have some chairs in front. Okay. Just the bottom. Thank you all.
How you doing?
If, if I may, I'll, I'll move to item ten, also an action item and this is. We didn't get it? Okay, I've got a motion, is there a second? Second to proclaim June as health summer meals? Discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten is also an action item and this is to approve an application by VTCI to install fiber optic line on Durango Street. Is there anyone here from?
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is Mark Elvan and this is Tito Rodriguez. We're with Engineering Department with VTCI and we have a proposal to put down some fiber optic cable down Durango Street, which is a new subdivision near La Carla Road off of seven fifty-five. And we're basically going to be servicing that, that community.
And what is it that you service there, sir? With those fiber?
Uh, the fiber optics actually services phone, internet, and vision services.
You know, and going back to that kind of service, we got an area there, my precinct on, on Old, Old Casita Road. And there's part there on, on, on eighty-three that we don't have internet service or cable or anything.
And it's near eighty-three?
It's near eighty-three. You have from, you have, you know, where the, La Cienda Restaurant is, across the street there's no internet, no cable or anything in certain areas. Out here, behind my, the Teniso Park, which is Old Casita Road, no internet, no cable, no nothing. And just across, they have some service, but on the other side, they won't.
Yeah, normally on, anywhere on eighty-three in that area, we normally do our wireless services because that, there are certain areas where we can, where we can service the, the community. There's certain areas where either AT&amp;T or Verizon are set to service that area, so we cannot go into that area. Now, what I can do is I can, you know, get the, the information as far as like the address and then once we look at our, at our scope or look at our, you know, Google Earth to show our actual service area, then we can go ahead and kind of see if we can give internet or, or phone services to that, to that location.
Let me ask you, I've seen they, they have installed several antennas in that area too. There's on Montano Hills, is, is those antennas are for this internet or is it for the border patrol?
No, sir, no, sir, those.
Was that the same area that the west condo?
Yeah, if you could, if you could provide us the, the addresses or the, the location, that way I can get a physical address, then we can go ahead and definitely look into it. And like I said, I mean, our fiber optic network or, or network services start from like Eisenhower Road going, going north. Okay, so it would be like towards La Carla Road, La Segunada, we, we service towards FM six forty-nine.
But what about on the east side?
No, on the east side, I would have to get the addresses.
What about if it, let's say that area were, belonged to the phone company or?
AT&amp;T or somebody else.
AT&amp;T. And they, they don't do it, can you all, can we request you guys to go in there and do it?
If we can, I mean, if we have, if we have the, the right to get into that area, then yeah.
Well, let's say you don't have the, the area assigned to you by the state, but can the county petition since the other company never did it?
We would have to petition the PUC to move the boundaries a little more to, you know, to cover that particular area. And it's a process also that you have to go through.
Well, before you leave, give me your card and I'll call you when, when I have a chance or you can come by and we'll go over there.
Sure. Tomorrow, actually, I will be in the area tomorrow.
I'm, 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 I'll be in Corpus tomorrow.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, no, that's fine, I can go ahead and, and provide you our, our information and then we can get together, we can make an appointment and then we can go ahead and, and get together on this, on this issue.
No problem.
Okay. Yeah, but like I said, in this, in this situation, it was, it was servicing, the, the area that we're petitioning for is for off La Carla Road on that new subdivision.
Just asking, you know, we need.
Motion is second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item seventeen is also an item from out the area and this is by Lone Star National Bank for the merchant payment cards for justice of the peace.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Rolando Cantu. I work with Lone Star National Bank in the Merchant Services Department. What we have here is a proposal stating the interchange fees, which is the interest fees that we charge and the fee per transaction. What you have there is states all the services that we, we would have, there's no, you have next day funding. The monthly fee is nine fifty, that's the basic service fee. The interchange fee is basically the interest rate that we charge per transaction including the eleven cents. So it'd be point three nine percent plus the eleven cents per transaction.
Before you go any further, let me, let me just explain to the commissioners why we're looking at this. I had several of the JP's that, that approached me about getting, I'm sure you've been to the stores where you buy and they swipe the credit card and they pay, it's automatic. Apparently, some of the JP's are getting requests by people that go to pay their fines that they want to pay with a credit card and we don't have it, so that's the reason I asked to look into it, to see if it's profitable for us.
Well, I think it's a good idea, you know, because all the JP hesitate to come in, they tell how much is the fine, then they have to go back and get a catch your check. It'd be a good idea, but this thirty-nine percent, point thirty-nine percent, what is it?
So that's the interchange fee. So aside from each, each merchant company that you go with, they charge you a, a fee to use their, their service. So that's point three nine percent plus eleven cents a transaction.
But they charge it to the, to the, to the client that go pays.
No, they, they charge it to you, sir, to, to the stock, to the county.
Okay.
And that's going to be with, with every merchant that you come across, every merchant service company.
Let's say that I want to go pay a transaction with a justice, how much is it going to cost me using the card or the county paying that?
So that all depends on the amount that you process per month.
The fine?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
If it's a hundred dollar fine, you're going to pay three ninety.
Around?
We're going to pay three ninety.
About, about thirty-nine cents plus eleven cents?
No, 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 no. On a two hundred. But it's a point.
Point three nine.
On a two hundred dollar fine, it would be seventy-eight cents, the point thirty-nine, and eleven cents, it'd be eighty-nine cents. Plus a nine fifty. Now, normally what, what is done is, let's say I'm going to go pay a two hundred dollar fine. It's two hundred dollars a fine and if I want to use a credit card, it'd be like two ten. And that's to take care of the expenses. I believe Ms. Alina, that's what you all do at the? Three percent.
But you were charged the client, the fine for the?
We don't know if we are paying, the county is paying for that service?
Yeah, we pay, we pay. Anytime we use a credit card, we pay, anywhere, you know, that's.
It's not charged to the client then, it's charged to us?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, when, when you go to the stores, that's a reason when gasoline, whatever, they say, if you use a credit card, then they charge you a little more and it's to make up these fees. Is that correct?
Correct. And there's also customers that I've seen, I've come across that they don't allow you to process all under five bucks.
See, pass on American Express.
The interchange fee for American Express is a lot higher because they basically create their own fees. They're always going to be a little bit more expensive than the rest.
The thing is that it'll be charged to the guy that uses the card, not to us.
No. Their fees go directly to us, but we charge, like I said, on a two hundred dollar fine, we can work on that. We can say it's going to be five percent or ten percent, which would be two hundred and ten dollars at five percent. We make four dollar profit, you know, in that transaction.
Because if they leave to go to the bank and they don't go back?
Yeah.
You don't get your, your money.
Yeah.
No, I think it's a good idea.
And the, American Express is the only one that is a little bit more expensive, but that's American Express itself that has their own fees. They're always going to be a little bit more expensive.
Yeah, they don't charge the customer, they charge the company.
What I was, what I was looking at, of course, with the approval of the court, is maybe installing in four areas that have the high volume and see how that works out. And, and if we see that the low volume JP's can also, it's profitable or the amount is worth, can ask question, then we can move it into the, to the smaller.
Let's do it.
Yeah, basically a trial run and there's no contract, so it is beneficial to.
Good point. No contract, so, see, no hala, we just return.
I think it's a good idea. Move to pass with those restrictions.
Yeah, but it's, it's in here. Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve. Any further discussion? I'm sorry? And that would be for four.
Yeah, four, four stations.
Okay. Any discussion? Oliver, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I guess I, I need to run, see who's producing more money? And, and I'll let you all know and that we all know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir. Okay. Any, anyone else from, from outside? I don't see anyone. If not, we'll, we'll go ahead and go with our reports. Gas department?
I mean.
Gas and transport for table to the prediction.
Okay. Tax assessor, Ms. Alina?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Our collections for, for May the twenty seventeen, it's in, in front of you. On May the twenty sixteen, there was a collection of five hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight hundred and two cents compared to May nine, twenty seventeen, it's seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. It's a difference of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six with twenty-four cents. On the total wide collection, it's three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two, ninety-seven cents. On May the seventeen, it's four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven with eighty-seven cents with a difference of a hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and four dollars and ninety cents. The total collection, the turf, I mean, excuse me, the total current, it's three hundred and, three hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty, and forty hundred, thirty-seven cents. On May this one, twenty seventeen, it's three hundred and eighteen, eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and sixteen, sixty-six cents with a difference of eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars with twenty-nine cents. On the total delinquent, it's two hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars with twenty-two cents with a difference on twenty seventeen, four hundred and forty-two thousand oh, ten cents with thirty-seven cents, ten dollars with thirty-seven cents with a difference of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty, and fifteen cents. The to, the total county MNO tax collection as of May thirty-first, twenty seventeen, it's eight million, one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and six, six hundred and eighty-nine cents. The current FM and tax collections as of my, March, May, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-first on twenty seventeen, it's three million, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine hundred and ninety-six cents. We have collected a to, a total of sixty-seven percent of our tax levy. Any questions?
Sixty-seven percent of the?
Of the total.
Allocated.
Of our, of our tax levy.
Of the current taxes?
Yeah.
See, that's sixty-seven percent of what was budgeted for the tax?
Of what you, of what we budgeted.
Of what was budgeted, yes.
Of the eighty percent of the budgeted.
Yes. So you have the figures in front of you, if you have any questions.
Are the substations working?
Yes, sir.
They're doing good?
Yes. Very good. And thank you for providing, thank you and, and Judge Vera for providing those employees who have been a great help in the, in the collection. Our, our goal is to serve the county and to serve the taxpayers, which is.
We don't represent no más el precinto, we represent the whole county.
Exactly. But with you all's help, I've been very successful on collecting and, and providing better service for our community and for taxpayers.
People don't have to go all the way to the ground.
Any other question, comment?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Presser, Mr. Penya?
The statements are not ready yet, so we.
Sheriff's Office? County clerk?
My report is in front of me, Commissioner, yes. We also have any questions?
Any questions, comments? International Bridge?
Okay, before we start, I would like to report that the insurance went down twenty thousand dollars.
So we're going to have a?
No claims, no anything. So it went down twenty thousand dollars for this coming year, which was very, very good.
So we'll have a surplus.
They failed just at the right time.
No, 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 that goes into fund balance.
No, ese es el condado, del, del puente, no?
See, but it goes to fund balance.
Pero échame la del puente.
No, 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 that goes to fund balance.
He made it by forty, no?
That's all right. Okay. Total revenue from traffic was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars, an increase of nine thousand, three twenty-one for the month of May, twenty seventeen, compared to the month of May, twenty sixteen. We showed an increase of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents on collections for the month of May's, May seventeen, I mean, twenty seventeen, compared to the month of April, twenty seventeen. Rent receipts, five hundred dollars. Currency exchange excess, a hundred and ninety-three point seventy-nine. Those are the pesos when we change them. And Border Patrol deported aliens, I don't know where they're passing them through, but aquí it shows a zero. Total other collections, three hundred and ninety-three and seventy-nine cents. For a total traffic collections of two hundred and twenty-nine, a hundred and eighty-five thousand for a grand total collections for the month of May, twenty seventeen, I mean, the month of, it wasn't May?
May.
Yeah, May, okay. Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Un plus, grandissimo. Now, next month, it'll probably go down because it's the summer. So, you know, the kids are not coming to school and so on and so forth. But we're doing good, we're doing real good. And the best thing was those twenty thousand dollars that was subtracted from the insurance que van para International Bridge. Thank you. Efficient. Open your eye. Efficiency, aye.
Management.
Yeah, efficient management.
Any questions? Any questions, comments? Federal and state programs? I don't see anyone here. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to tables items A, B, D, E and H.
I don't know.
Moved and second to table. Oliver, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries and I'll entertain a motion to approve items C, F, G and eight, no, and F and G. Have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second?
Second. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
All right, Judge, well, before we continue, Mr. Carter, I know, I don't know if you're going to want to hear this question, but now what we're doing with the, with the audit? Where are we at? Give or take?
Judge, I have developed a checklist of the funds that need to be reconciled in order to hand the, in order to deliver the financial statements to, to the auditors. We're about halfway through. We're probably a little over halfway through reconciling the individual funds. So we're making progress.
Have the agencies been notified that we might be late?
No, they haven't been notified yet.
They need to be notified. How about, you know, we had talked about people going in there and disturbing your operation, not allowing people, your employees to work efficiently, has that been taken care of?
Yes, that has been taken care of.
We had what?
Any, anything we can do?
Well, anyway, but there's no way, there's no doubt that it will be done on, on time. We can see that, but hopefully we can start, I mean, working on the, see if we can get the extension for the.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's what we need, we, I guess we need to, so that we don't wait till the very end to let the agencies know. That way, it gives us time to go up there and lobby for them to give us more time.
I had hoped to do that last week, but it didn't get done. I'm doing that this week.
Okay, very well.
To get done this week?
See.
And.
Ask him for the extension, not the audit itself.
Yeah, for the extension, to, to send the letters.
Ah, the extension letter, so.
Okay. Uh, any other thing? Okay, we'll move on to item number seven. This is an action item to approve the new vendor's list. I believe you all have it before you.
I don't know.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eight, also an action item, and this is a pretty standard thing. The fireworks, yeah, certain fireworks in the county to prohibit them from being lit. I believe this are the rocket-type fireworks.
Second?
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item and this is to approve a reimbursement for an application in the amount of twenty-five dollars to Los Girasoles. What this was, was our planning department went and did an inspection on, I guess, a restaurant or someone that sells food. And the ti, they went, did the inspection by the time the permit and all that was, was being done. City of Rio Grande had already passed their planning department, so then we couldn't do it, it had to be the city. But we had already charged them, so it's just a reimbursement. Moved and second, discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twelve is to amend Castillo Lane to include a hundred and twenty-nine point six nine feet by thirty-nine point thirty-six. Mr. Azia?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This Castillo Lane, Judge, falls on the Commissioner's science precinct as per his request. Also, we've been out there and looked at this, it's an existing road and we just want to amend it, extend it, actually, it's on a right-of-way.
But have you, have it been gone, have the, a engineer or a surveyor done and dedicated to the county?
It's already paved, Commissioner. It's got all the, it's already paved. It's already paved and it's got all the services.
The evidence called paving. You're trying to extend the width and the, of the road, ain't it?
No, sir. It's a, it's already an existing road.
I understand, but yeah. To include one hundred, one hundred and twenty-nine by, what is this, one twenty-nine point sixty-nine by thirty-nine? What is it, that about? One twenty-nine, the length?
Yes, the length.
And thirty-nine point thirty-six is the width.
The width. There's a, Mr. Trump is working on.
I mean, working on, you have to present it to the court to be approved. To me, when you have the.
Yes.
Morning, Commissioner. Judge, what we're, I was telling Mondo earlier, what we're coming here is asking for an, an extension and what is the procedure to follow? Because all we're doing, asking right now is like, is it okay with the Commissioner, with the court to extend the street?
You're not asking.
Come back with the deed from the owner to the county to make it.
You're not asking, you're telling us this is going to be approved. I mean, based on the, on the item and the agenda. Of course, we're asking, what's the requirement right now, fifty-foot wide, ain't it?
Yeah, so what, what you're asking is to extend the, the existing road? What happens is, the subdivision ends. The paved road continues.
Okay.
Maintained by the county.
Maintained by the county. It's paved, yes. And then it continues another quarter mile with more residents down there and this is not a dedicated road and there's people living there. What happened is, you know, people owned it and they sold it and sold it and sold it and people started living there. Turns out, we surveyed the property right next to the subdivision. There's a big house across their survey, so technically that house doesn't have access because it's on private property. However, that private property has a paved road. So what we're asking, what the, the way it was presented should have been, it's more like, what is the procedure?
To, to, to approve, to approve. We had one of these last month, I believe, where we approved this street as being a public, a county road because there was no record of it being a county road.
Correct. And, and we've done it before. Before, we went back into the research records, we couldn't find anything because before, there's been like a county-wide dedication of roads that were listed that we found in the records. This one shows up nowhere, however, it's paved. Is it by possession?
Well, maintained by the county, so I think we should get it approved. Do I want to make a motion to accept the, to include the?
I, I guess the motion, you know, if I may interject, the motion would be to declare Castillo Lane, an additional hundred and thirty feet of, of Castillo Lane as county road because it's been maintained as a county road.
Does that the word?
Okay, I, I've got a motion to go. Second, discussion, no, it can be discussed. And, and the reason being that it's already a county road. We don't want to say that it wasn't and we did work on it.
Correct.
We're just declaring it a county road.
So what we're going to do now is bring the, the deed, correct, from the owner to the county.
Yeah.
For record purposes.
Correct.
And we, and I'm bringing it up because every, on a daily basis, we have those kind of problems.
Yeah.
He brought one, one, some ladies up in La Victoria that wanted to have a, a road name because they want to have the, an address. I said, no, it's not a county road, es una vederita, and it's private land. They say, you need to understand that we can name it, but it's not going to be a county road because it's not, you know. And she, and the lady wants to, wants to make a loan to, to build her house there. I said, you're not, you're not going to get it approved, nowhere, matter what. We can name the, the, the road because hey, all you have to do go to planning department and just name, name the road and we'll give you the permit. Well, it's, it's una vederita. So I told them, you want to do it, I can name it for you, but it's not going to work.
Correct.
And I, I, so I told him, went through him, he wants, he's got property And I, so I told him, went through him, he wants, he's got property that he wants to dedicate a road with a 50-foot eastman, dedicated to the county with a paper and engineer to have interest to the property and to that same file that he had.
Yeah, normally, the standard I take, Commissioner, is if someone wants to come and give us property for a road, normally, they want, so we can go in there and we pave it and we do all this stuff. And what I tell them is, we can go ahead and accept it as long as it meets the model rules and regulations requirements, which means they have to be paved, it's got to be all this stuff, you know. We don't want to burden our taxpayers with other people's problems, you know. But since this one's already paved, that's the reason I-
Is it already paved, what do you want to add?
Yeah.
And then it continues past this section, and then it's, the pavement starts, and then the total-
So then this road has to be paved and-
I would say so, sí, porque si no-
No, I'm talking about the one that we want to, so I can bring in the guy because, you know, because- I know, I understand, but he has to pave it and everything.
I would suggest that. It's up to you, Commissioner, because you're the one that's going to have the expense. But I would suggest that it be paved.
No, but no, it's no way, you know.
Well, and if it's eight or 10 people, then that's different.
No, it's only one people there. I told him he wants to dedicate it to the county, you know. Because he wants to make a loan, so there's no way you're going to get a loan approved because you don't have an access. And what she did, she wanted the name because she was told by planning department to name the street. I said, I can name it for you, that's no problem. But it's not going to be a county road. You need to understand that, and you will not have, there's no public access to that property.
Correct. So, I'm sorry, I had a motion and a second, Commissioner, anyways. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Excuse me, item 13 is an action item and is to approve a checking account to coincide with a new general ledger to manage grant funds. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. After studying the situation in the auditor's office, the auditor's office would like a way to better segregate grant funds that come into the county. We have established on our computer system a separate fund account, but now we need a checking account to correspond to that. So that we can keep all grant funds segregated from the other funds.
Okay.
So we're just requesting an authority to establish the account.
Yeah, and certainly, I don't have a problem, the, in the past, we're very careful to open up new accounts because every account that we open, it's more auditing by the external auditor and more expense to the county. But if you need it, certainly, I think we should.
It doesn't move yet?
Second. Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 14 is to approve, to amend the Colonia Self-Health Center guidelines.
Will you give them to you, just normal procedure? It doesn't move?
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 15, also to approve construction of housing rehab, contract 7215013. Is there a motion to approve?
It doesn't move yet? Second.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 16 is also an action item and is to approve the South Texas College Collection Fee Contract payable 2017 to 3.5% of total collections. Ms. Alina, you want to explain, or you will be alone?
It's just, it's not a renewal, it's just an updated, an updated amendment between the county and the STC. We have this rate 10 years ago, so the 10 years are over, so they agreed on a 3.5%.
What was the, what was the previous?
It was a fixed rate because the-
Now it's 100%, but it increased the amount?
Yes.
It doesn't move yet?
It increased to 3.5% and it's just the renewal of the contract with the new rate.
It doesn't move?
Everything else stays the same, it's just that we're going to increase it, and they agreed on it.
I have a motion and a second. Under discussion, I just want to discuss, we had previously approved a 5%, but it was after negotiating with them, going back and forth, everyone else, they paid 3.5% or less. They don't pay the 5%, and 5% would have made it quite excessive. 3.5 is, I think, reasonable. It takes care, and the way we arrived at this 3.5, so the public is aware as to how it was done, of the total amount of money collected for county, for hospital, for the college, for everyone that we collect, we took the amount of money that went to the county, and the amount that went to the hospital, and from there, we figured a percent that they needed to pay so that we could pay 100% of the tax office. And theirs came out to about a, really, it was about a 3%, but we went to 3.5. So I do have a motion and a second. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Items 18 through 26 are budget amendments. Are those in order?
Move to pass.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And it is 11 o'clock, and pursuant to section 551.074, and 551.071, we're going to adjourn to the session to discuss order of salaries, power of attorney and contention fee contract with Garcia de la Garza, consult with attorneys on claim and damages for Javier Cruz Jr., and to consult with attorneys on cost 711-CV-00210 for settlement agreement. It's 11:30, and we're back in open session. Under item 31, items covered in executive session, I entertain a motion to approve the order of salaries as presented.
Move to pass. Second, you.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 28, also discussed in executive session, and this is to approve the contract, fee contract, contention fee contract with Garcia de la Garza, attorneys Houston. Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 29, also an action item, and I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and approve our county attorney to negotiate settlement as discussed with Javier Cruz Jr.
It doesn't move yet? No, second.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And on the last one that we discussed was also a settlement agreement for cost number 711-CV-00210, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the settlement request on this case.
Second, you.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion-